Good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. It's agenda setting work session for Tuesday, May 6, 2025. It is 9:05 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board, to my left Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier. We have Commissioner Grant, Commissioner Mejia, Commissioner Klaus participating virtually. County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Jennifer Walker and Josh Cummings. We have public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel, and written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and will be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. It is Spirit Day or Spirit Week here in Thurston County, and today's band T-shirt day. So if you see commissioners and/or staff wearing their favorite band shirts, that's why. So having fun with that this week. Okay, next, first up is review of the afternoon's board meeting agenda. And this is a second review, so we've gone through things last week, and we will be just picking up certain items that had questions or follow-up. And I'm gonna look to the Clerk of the Board, just the two items that I see highlighted.
Correct.
Okay, so just the first item is just to note that we've got commissioners that are in Washington DC. Is that correct? Where you guys are? Philadelphia, sorry. Philadelphia for Behavioral Health Conference, and we appreciate their service and trip there. They'll be zooming in, so I'll be leading Pledge of Allegiance. No big deal, but.
We all three?
Commissioner Klaus, will you be in person today, this afternoon? Can you hear us?
She's not, she's not in Philly.
Yes, I will be.
Okay, perfect. So then we've got our consent items, and nothing's changed there. We have 10 items.
Correct.
And then, or sorry, those are the consent proclamations. Let's talk about that for one second, since we did kind of a new procedure last meeting. And we do have kind of a similar slate. Just to remind myself, we're gonna have one speaker per.
There are, there is one group that has two speakers for this one. They were invited.
Previously, yeah. Okay, in the future, when we do them like this, we're probably gonna ask for just one speaker per topic. But this one kind of is the trans, or you know, some folks had already lined up two, that's fine. Which one is that?
That is for Older Americans Month.
Older Americans Month, okay. So I'll ask each group if they have a speaker, and they'll be given four minutes and.
Yes, and we will have a script for you that calls out the speaker's name.
Okay.
Be easy to identify.
And maybe ask them to, maybe if you could ask them upfront when they, after they've spoken, to come and receive their proclamation?
Yes.
That way they know to come up. I hand them, I don't have to chase people down off the dais for each single one.
We're also happy to hand them the proclamation either on their, you know, as they come into the boardroom for the meeting or as they leave the podium.
Okay, whatever works, whatever's a little smoother than what I felt like it was last.
Folks also get nervous.
Yeah.
They run away from the podium.
Yeah, 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 no, I mean, yeah, okay. So any questions on the consent proclamations? We will be having an auditor's office award. Yes.
Commissioner Mensah? I think it would also be great, like, if we can take pictures of the people who are here for the proclamations, like, on the stairs. It doesn't have to include the commissioners, because of that, I think it just includes too much. But I think just, you know, pictures of the people who are here speaking. If Ellen can, you know, take them to the stairs and take a picture of them with their proclamation. Is that okay? I just think, you know, like, if we're doing this, I'd as well have a picture of them here.
She'll be managing all of these.
Yeah. I mean, maybe once they're all done.
One photo?
Yeah, we can have one photo with all of them together on the stairs.
Or she could let them know, if you want to, if you want to hang around for 15 minutes, we could get a photo of you on the stairs, and then it's their choice.
Yeah, we can work that into our, I mean, there's a couple of things as we're implementing new process. Communication staff has with them as they come to the meeting, set expectations, and then the script that we'll prepare for the chair that also helps to explain things. So that's something for consideration. We can make sure we're communicating on both ends, just so everyone's clear. Josh is right, folks get a little bit nervous when they come. Sometimes folks don't always show up, and so we're trying to manage, making sure things move quickly and honoring them appropriately.
Okay, then let's move to the consent item three. Reappointment to emergency medical services council.
This item was reviewed by the Board, and the Board provided direction to include the reappointment for Ms. Hambley.
So this is just adding on to last week's agenda for an item that we were ready to move forward on. Any questions on item three under consent? Okay. We have the HADTAP for Humanity item as a department item, and we have a public hearing on ordinance amending Cap County Code to regulate disposition of public property for portable housing. Think we're all tracking what that's about.
Chair.
Yeah.
If I may address this item, it was brought to our attention that the legal noticing requirements were not completely met for this, and we are shifting the public, or we recommend to shift the public hearing to May 20th to allow for proper noticing.
So does it remain on department items, or are we? This is under public hearing. We're down to public hearing, okay. Is that the time, the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or concerns about moving the public hearing to May 20th? Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. I, thank you for that, Amy. And then maybe this can be announced at the beginning of the meeting. Just if people are waiting for that 3:30, you know, they don't have to wait. And just let them know that, yes, this for the chair. You know, Commissioner Mensah could announce this at the beginning of the meeting, just so people know the public hearing is being rescheduled. And maybe posting something online right now.
Yeah, we can post some messages online, which is a great idea.
Yep, I'll make that note. Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Good idea. Move to the May 20th at 3:30 as well. Okay, so that will be this afternoon's agenda. Any questions on what we're doing at 2:00 p.m. Commissioner Mejia.
Sorry, I feel like I'm on a roll right now. Two things. The first thing, and we're gonna be discussing items, but I'm, I'm wondering if the Board will indulge me on planning, appointing a planning commissioner. District one seat has been empty for a while, did a recruitment. We got, I got one application initially, Yvonne Miller, and then I just received a second application, which they came in and provided public comment previous planning commission, and they're very engaged, and they were commenting in regards to the health piece of the comprehensive plan. And honestly, I think she'd be a great supportive health member. And so for me at this time, I would like to move forward with the appointment of Yvonne Miller, just because, you know, I, I'm just a little nervous that we're starting with the public hearings or the comprehensive plan. And, you know, I feel like a planning commissioner will need to be up to date on those, on those items. So I would rather appoint them sooner rather than later. I'd brought up her application before at a previous meeting, but decided to pause because I heard that there might be some more applications coming in. But just given this, I am wondering if the Board will indulge me in just appointing Yvonne Miller to the planning commission under District one seat.
You want to put her on today? Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, I'm, you know, I'm just, it's starting to make me nervous just because the public hearings are ongoing, and there's planning. I don't know when the next planning commissioner meeting is, and if our next meeting is till May 20th, and then that's, it's just a little bit more delay, and I'm just nervous that they're going to miss out on important work that the planning commission is already doing, and the catch-up is quite a bit, so.
I'd have to look to the clerk to see, can we add something on the agenda at this time?
I would recommend we hold until May 20th.
Well, could we, I mean, we can take action at meetings besides the board meeting. It's possible we could set this on for the next board meeting early next week.
Yes.
Even if it's not a.
Yep.
Agenda setting, means, is that, Commissioner Mejia, would that work? That way we could all re-eyeball the application, and obviously it's your appointment, but then we all, we all, you know, vote on that. And so, and that would, that, we wouldn't have to wait till the 20th then.
We'll queue it up for Tuesday.
Okay, queued up for Tuesday. Does that work?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We can send out the application again, and so that everyone has the information on the ready.
All right, very good. Okay, next up is Advisory Board Salary Commission.
Right, Commissioners, we, Maria. Regarding the Salary Commission, the Chair proposed adjusting the language of the Salary Commission to dedicate one seat to the labor representative and keeping the other three seats as members that fill those other three fields. So we're bringing that to the Boards.
There was other, there was other two fields, I thought. So I, let me just explain. So I had a hearing all the public con, or all the public comment and commissioner comment. I tried to come up with a compromise that would give us flexibility, but address the labor seat issue. So my proposal, rather than having four seats that could go to any of those four fields, my idea was to have one of those seats dedicated labor seat, and then have the other three seats be flexible amongst human resources, business, and legal. So then you would, we would hopefully retain the flexibility to get the seats filled, you know, not be required to have a lawyer necessarily, or required to have a business rep, but we would have that dedicated seat toward labor, which seemed to be the main concern I heard from both public commenters and commission comment. So that's kind of a hybrid between where we were and where we were, what we were presented to do. Commissioner Fournier?
Yeah, I, I like that compromise. I, I still think I want to try to meet the intent of hitting all the, excuse me, of hitting all those categories if we can. So we should, you know, we should make that a goal, but we all know that's hard. But I, I like, I like the Chair's, the Chair's concept and kind of the, the way, the way that he crafted it. So I am in favor of making that adjustment.
So I consulted with Jane, and she's joined us because we had some clarification, because with the, how the state law is written, the qualifications are somebody in personnel slash HR or related field. And so it's getting a better understanding of the legal and business representatives, and whether they first meet that, those qualifications. And here's Jane, and maybe she can further clarify the information we, we would need for her to rewrite that ordinance.
Yeah, good morning Commissioners, Jane Futterman, Prosecutor's Office. There, I, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on the requirements for the positions appointed by the Board. So each of, so, so right now, the way the ordinance is written, that you, you have four positions to appoint, and they need to, number one, be all be residents of the county. They cannot be an officer, official, or family member of any county employee or official. And they need to have experience in the field of personnel management or a related field. So the issue is, are you intending that you, you find individuals that have experience in the field of personnel management and are a business representative, what did you say? HR professional or legal representative? Or are you making a determination that these are related fields, and therefore the person does not have to have experience in the field of personnel management? So that's one question. So I'm not sure what you're finding. I guess just by the wording, it's not clear to me that somebody who's a legal representative, whether that's a related field to personnel management. So that, that's a question for the Board.
Wasn't it prior, you had to be, there was one that had to be a, a labor rep, one that had to be a legal representative, and then one that had to be from some type of human resources field. Those were three requirements, right?
Right, and the statute is.
And then we were trying to wipe that away and make it to where it could just be anybody of those four. I thought it was just anybody, okay.
No, no, so actually, under the prior version of the statute, they also had to have experience in personnel management. But it was never just anybody. There've always been requirements.
Okay.
But under the current statute, the requirements are to have experience in the field of personnel management or a related field. So when you raise the issue of wanting a labor representative, what we did is put in language that says a related field such as organized labor, meaning that that's a board finding that organized labor is related to personnel management. And so the question is, are you making a determination that the legal and business are related fields to personnel management? And so, and if so, what are the requirements? Do they have to be, you know, managing people? So is somebody who's, say, right out of law school or right out of paralegal program, are they qualified? You know, and so, you know, they may not really have personnel management experience. And so that, that's my question for you, is how you wanted to set it up. But in order to, well, if you say they have to have experience in, in the field of personnel management, and then in addition, be a legal representative, business representative, or HR representative, I think that's fine. If you're saying we're doing that instead, then we need to have real guidelines for what experience these people have that make them related to personnel management.
I think we may be over-complicating the, Jane. So as the statute required that four positions, and it listed out the requirements of the background. What, as I understand, a Commissioner's, Mentors compromise is, based on board discussion, you have one that's dedicated to labor. Then the other three could be in any mixture of those three categories. And that's really the question that we're asking, is, is that appropriate? The requirement question, maybe if we need to take this offline, talk about it, because I know that you, you were out, and I'm glad that you're back. But if we need to dial this in so we can come back and just vet that idea, then, then I think we should do that, and I.
Yeah, because we had a legal seat before, and, and we had a business seat before, and they didn't need personnel experience. That was, that was separate. It was each, there was a personnel seat, there was a legal seat, there was a business seat, there was a labor seat, right? And now, let's say, keep, all I'm saying is keep the labor seat, and then let the other three be filled by either, it could, under, under, under my compromise, it could end up being three lawyers, or three business, or three HR professionals. We just didn't want it to, we, we didn't want to, I didn't want to either exclude a labor representative or pack it with four labor representatives. I wanted it to be, I wanted to try to, I wanted to have the labor voice prioritized, but yet keep the flexibility so we can keep the Salary Commission filled, which has been a perennial problem when we've got the labor and business and HR seats that are harder to fill. Commissioner Grant?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused. You guys can hear me okay, right?
Yes.
I'm in a huge room, so I, I guess I'm a little confused because I think what I just heard was that Jane read the statute, and the words that I heard in the statute is that none of those things are in it. And so, and then you had said that the statute changed, right? So the statute is what you just read earlier, and then, so it actually doesn't lay out who needs to be on, just the, so does our policy, as it's written now, actually have these four categories in it?
It did.
I'm just wondering if we're actually, we're actually taking it from, it sounds to me like we're actually putting constraints on it instead of taking, the statute change.
That's correct. So the, so number one, the county's current code, the ordinance that's in effect now, is, was written under the old version of the statute. That had to be changed, that has to be changed before the Salary Commission can meet again, because we're past the deadline to comply with that statute. So they're not going to be able to meet unless, unless we change the code and, and, and be consistent with the state law. So that's number one. And then you are correct that the current version of the statute requires the individuals, in addition to be voter, eligible voters, residents of the county, they have to be, they, excuse me, they must have experience in the field of personnel management or a related field. That is all it says. So the state law no longer specifies anything about labor, business, or other, other categories, except they have to have experience in the field of personnel management or a related field. If you leave the, if you leave the code to be limited to the, what the state law says, when appoint, when evaluating applicants, when appointing members, you can always make a determination of which skills you want, which experience you want.
And that's where we were going, but then some folks took that as us trying to take a step to limit certain voices on our planning, on our Salary Commission, when in fact we were just trying to adopt new state law and open it up to a wider variety of people.
Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you, and thank you for that question, Commissioner Grant. I was trying to, to kind of get it all straightened out. I'm wondering, Commissioner Mensah, going back to what your proposal was, if you could restate that, just based on the explanation that Jane has given now.
Well, I, I could restate it, but it's, I mean, what, I'm confused, I guess, by Jane's explanation. Not that it's wrong or anything, but I'm just confused where that puts us, because, because it sounds to me like the law changed to say, we don't need, I, I don't, I guess I'm looking to Jane to tell us, is a lawyer or a business seat, the ones that we had, a related field to personnel? Sounds like you're saying no unless they had specific, like, specific additional personnel type of responsibilities that would put them. Employment lawyer. So if that's true, then really the law has changed, kind of Wayne's point is valid, where it's like, the law changed and said, the law changed the landscape of who should sit in those four seats. Because it used to be these, these, these categories that don't necessarily apply. I mean, and we were always struggling to find the lawyer. That's just one I know of, because that sat, sat empty for a lot of years, till I, you know, was able to find. But then, but if that's not a related field, then really it's the law has said, don't put that kind of person in there.
Yeah, my, my recommendation is.
So why are we trying to stuff them back in?
Yeah, my recommendation is let us, I think this is not ready for this conversation.
Yeah.
Let us work with Jane and Maria. Take your concept, and then understand the dynamics, and then come back with, with something that we can have you.
Let me restate something, Commissioner, so Commissioner Mejia, to answer your question, my goal was to have a labor seat, but to keep the other three seats as flexible as the law permits. So with, maybe my exact construction of that wasn't quite right, given that the law's changed in the way that Jane explained. But that's, that's the concept that I'm trying to achieve. Retain labor, one seat dedicated, but keep flexibility on the other ones, and not have a situation where it's all packed with labor and no personnel, and no, because personnel is obviously clearly identified in the statute. Labor isn't, apparently. I think it's good if we kept that in there, but, but it sounds like we've got to harmonize what we want with what the statute allows.
Yeah, let, give us time to do the research, and we understand the, what we're trying to accomplish. And we'll bring this back in about a week, once we can dial that in and get it all situated.
Commissioner Grant, did you have something you needed to say?
No, I just wanted to emphasize, reiterate what I think you just did, which I think that, you know, that we, now that we understand this a little bit better, we should just, we should allocate a seat for labor. I do think we should do that, and maybe other flexibles, so, just in agreement with you.
Commissioner Fournier is next.
I just, I think this conversation would have gone differently if we would have been saying, we're changing our, our ordinances to, to reflect the new state laws. If, if it would have been that simple. And instead, it felt to me like we were making adjustments, kind of like independently. If, if all we were doing is saying we're, we're updating our ordinances to reflect the changes in state law that allow for more people to be a part of this, this Salary Commission, that would have been a, a different discussion, I think, than the way, the way it went down.
Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. I just kind of want to highlight one piece, right? Of like, there is no pressure for the Salary Commission to meet, because we did kind of bump our salaries, and the elected salaries for this year. So I'm just looking towards Maria, is that correct? They're not on this time crunch of like, we have to meet by this deadline?
We were hoping to get them started sooner this year, but there's nothing that requires that. Typically, we would start in July, so we still have time.
Okay.
Okay, more to come on that one. Thank you, County Manager. Thanks, Jane. Let's go on to item three. Commissioner, item, potential partnership for community workshop with South Puget Sound Community College and the Nisqually Tribe.
Thank you so much, Chair. I think we have an exciting opportunity that we wanted to bring to the Board for direction. There are some wonderful training workshops that come from the Nisqually Tribe and, and South Puget Sound Community College. I was also engaged in wanting to do a combined staff training and then community outreach around education about the fish wars and some other cultural history. There was some excitement about planning this for the fall. And the idea would be, if the Board is interested in, in exploring this, doing something for our staff training under diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then also working with South Puget Community College to do a community-type forum and outreach event.
Questions?
Commissioner Fournier, can I just clarify?
Yeah, Commissioner Mejia.
I believe it's with, it's not with the Nisqually Tribe, but it's just with Willie Frank.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, so, well.
Yeah, former tribal chairman. This, there's a workshop that he put on for Pierce County that was very successful, and he shared that with us, and, and we wanted to bring it here to our community. And it also kind of lines up with the rollout of the Billy Frank Jr. statue that's going to be going into DC and into our own capital within like, the next year, year and a half.
So what would the?
So what would the, I mean, anything you're, just looking for?
Just looking for direction. We would look to plan this in October. South Puget Sound Community College has identified some dates, and then we would look to try to do a corresponding event here for county staff, and we would open it up to other organizations' staff, as we have room and availability, and then they would do a community forum event, most likely in an evening, like an evening event. So we think this is a great opportunity to, in conjunction with that statue, and to draw out, you know, some of our local history, and some of the cultural values that our tribes bring tremendous value to the region, and, yeah, so we're looking for direction from the Commissioners.
Would it be like, and SPSCC is involved through helping fund the program?
Yes.
They're helping share costs, and then providing, they've got a big auditorium there, where there would be, the community-facing event would probably be in the Minute Center.
So minimal cost, then? Not much cost associated with that?
We, we're not at the point of discussing what the cost would be, but great question, Commissioner Grant, we can come back and report that out. I just, before we got too far into this, wanted to make sure that there was board direction to do that. I think that this is something we could roll in under Public Health and Social Services' Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training, and then also look to see how the county would support it. I think, based on what's been expressed to me, at the value of the training, it'd be great for our employees to have this type of resource made available to them.
Okay, Commissioner Mihia.
Just also wanted to add, this is, this has been a priority for South Puget Sound Community College as well. It was in their board plan to have a workshop like this. So I think it's a great opportunity to partner with, you're not, not just for the cost sharing, right, but also for the opportunity for both, both of our staffs, as well as the students there.
I heard a little bit about what happened in Pierce County, and it sounded really, really interesting and cool, so I'm supportive of that. Okay, that's the end of the morning's agenda. Nothing else? Okay, Commissioner, nope, you got some hands, Commissioner Mihia, I saw you first.
Sorry, sorry, one second. I just, just based on the fact that the public hearing is rescheduled, you know, there's other things going on here in Philadelphia, so I believe me and Commissioner Grant will not be attending the 2:00 PM meeting, just based on kind of this morning's conversation.
And Chair, if the board has time, we, there was an email that came out, that if, it's a will of the board, for us to discuss the Timberland Regional Library interviews, if, knowing that we had time today, we'd want to do that.
This morning?
This morning.
Okay.
So the idea behind that was, we've done the interviews with all those that showed interest. There was one candidate that never responded back, council, didn't show up for the first interview, and we made several attempts to try to get a hold of them, they didn't show up. So Clerk's recommendation was to move forward with the board's conversation about who they're interested in, and to start that off, an idea was that each board member would list the top two to three candidates that they want to talk about, we could put them up on a whiteboard, and then see where there's consistency, and then start moving towards discussion about who the board would like to select.
Getting out? This morning?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we've done in the past that kind of a process. Let me go to Commissioner Grant, though, before we get to that item.
Well, you know, it's okay, I just don't have my notes, so, I mean, but maybe if somebody could, if somebody could send me a list of the candidates' names.
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll know that you right now, Commissioner Grant.
Okay.
And if the board's not prepared to do this, we can push it to a future.
I'd like to get it done, if you guys have time. I mean, it's 9:38. Could we take like, seven minutes, come back at 9:45? I got notes upstairs as well, I'd like to grab, make sure everybody's got what they can get and what they need, and then we'll start the process, that work?
Yes.
Okay, so we're in recess. Okay, it's 9:49. We are back from a recess. I just want to make the announcement that essentially, the public portion of the meeting is concluded. The Commissioners will continue discussing some applicants for a committee appointment, and that will not be livestreamed, but it's an open public meeting. So we'll see everybody back at 2:00 PM, as far as public goes. Thank you for attending this morning.